Now in public session. Members of the Board of Trustees, Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs, please respond present when you hear your name. Trustee Una Clark. She's here somewhere. Trustee Sandra Wilkin.
Present.
Trustee Michael Arvanees.
Present.
Trustee Myra Naras Garcia.
Present.
Faculty Representative Hugo Fernandez. Faculty Alternate Victoria Chevalier. Student Representative Giovanni Picquant.
She's in the waiting room.
She's in the waiting room. Giovanni, are you in?
Yes, I am. Hello, everyone.
Welcome back. It's good to see you.
Good to see you all.
This public meeting of the City University of New York Board of Trustees is now called to order pursuant to the New York State Legislature's recent extension of the suspension of required in-person meetings. Under the open meetings law, this meeting is being held remotely via video conference with access to the public session available on the CUNY Board of Trustees website.
Present.
Why?
A copy of the calendar agenda of items is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Additional items may be added during the meeting. As a reminder, mute your phones so we can ensure that everyone can hear clearly. I will now take a roll call attendance of members of the Chancellor Felix Matos Rodriguez. Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Daniel Lemon. General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs Derek Davis. interim Vice Chancellor Denise Maybank. President Jennifer Rabb. Assistant Vice Chancellor Chris Rosa.
And present.
Great. And Director of Disability Programs Carrie Shockley. Okay, I see you. I will now call on Vice Chancellor Denise Maybank to present her report to the committee. Vice Chancellor Maybank, will you be sharing it or I'll share the screen with you?
I'll share the screen for the enrollment report which follows the other part of the meeting.
Okay, just. Okay. So you don't have a need a report right now?
Not right. I do have a report right now. Yes.
Oh, you do? Okay, but do you need to share the screen?
Not right now. Later on.
Okay, have at it.
Thank you. Today, we have the privilege of two really important presentations, so I'm going to be brief in my report. But I do thank you for this opportunity, and it's good to see all of you. My report today highlights the important partnerships we have with agencies, organizations, and entities interested in supporting the achievements, well-being, and thriving of our amazing students. The New York City Partnership, in October, I shared the announcement of $400,000 from the New York City Council to support the formation of the CUNY LGBTQI plus Consortium. Through a proposal process, campuses have been identified to receive funding that will build capacity to support members of CUNY's LGBTQI community and expand programming. The outstanding campus proposals were vetted by the consortium and based upon their recommendations, the $400,000 is being distributed to support the most meritorious projects. Eight of the campuses have already been notified of their awards and five are pending notification. Foundation partnerships. Through a two-year grant of 1.2 million from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, Student Affairs and Enrollment Management is partnering with the Graduate Center's College Access Research and Action Program, known as CARA, the City College of New York and the Borough of Manhattan Community College to provide specially-designed peer mentoring support to a cohort of incoming students. CUNY College Connect is a pilot bridge program through which trained coaches work with students planning to attend the same CUNY college as their coaches. College Connect's design also ensures the coaches continue to support their assigned students through the first year of college. During the first quarter of the project, over 2,100 students have received support from 28 peer-coach mentors. The JED Foundation focuses its efforts on protecting emotional health and preventing suicide among teens and young adults. Born of the grief of JED's family following his suicide as a college student in 1998, a comprehensive and well-tested approach to engaging individuals, schools, and communities has been developed. Nearly 350 colleges partner with JED to strengthen their programming and resources associated with mental health, substance misuse, and suicide prevention. Today, I'm pleased to announce CUNY's collaboration with the JED Foundation has officially begun on four of our campuses: Gutman, York, Queens, and Baruch. And our federal partnership, the third and largest amount of federal stimulus funds provided under the American Rescue Plan Act are beginning to be dispersed to students. We anticipate the average combined awards for fall 2021 and spring 2022 to be around $1,200 to $1,600 per student. The one other accomplishment I draw to your attention today is the work of our Location Vaccine Authority designees, who have been toiling diligently to review and approve student submissions and vaccination documentation in compliance with board policy. Those serving in this role review the submissions and communicate directly with students to be certain information is accurate. Our LVAs deserve accolades for the lift and for the excellence they have displayed in getting us to vaccination verification. For 92.89% of our students enrolled during the fall semester in in-person courses. And finally, as you may be aware, after 36 years of relationship and contributions, we are celebrating the evolution of a native son. Dr. Christopher Rosa, Assistant Vice Chancellor for Student Inclusion Initiatives, has been tapped to be the president and CEO of the Viscardi Center. This is about the work of his heart, his advocacy, his identity, his consciousness, and while we will miss his optimism and his commitment to the core of who we are, we are so proud of him and excited for all he will accomplish. Please join me in wishing him every good and perfect experience and just in celebrating the amazing person Dr. Christopher Rosa has shown us he is.
Woo-hoo!
In conclusion, we have so much for which to be thankful, and if you are searching your mind for something to share during Thanksgiving or Friendsgiving celebrations this week, allow me to offer you one. We are thankful for partnerships, shared moments of trust, and being given the opportunity to make a difference in the lives and futures of our amazing CUNY students. Happy Thanksgiving. That concludes my official report.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. Are you hearing me?
I am hearing you.
Okay. Thank you so very much, Vice Chancellor. And let me just add a word to Vice Chancellor departing. I will miss you with all my heart and with all my love goes with you, and I know how brave and how competent you are. And our loss is somebody's gain, and I know that the gain will be a great gain wherever you go and whatever you put your mind to will be accomplished.
Thank you, trustee. Thank you, Vice Chancellor.
We will now take up the following items for approval. Action item number 2A, approval of the minutes of October 4th, 2021, and the special meeting of November 8th, 2021. I'm. May I have one of? I move for the approval of action item number 2A. Do I have a second?
Arvanees, check.
All in favor? Any opposed? No abstention? It's adopted. With no action item on policy calendar, I now move for the information items on the agenda. Information item 3A. We will now update the development of CUNY Inclusive Higher Education Program for students with intellectual disabilities. I call on Assistant Vice Chancellor Rosa, Director of Disability Programs, and Carrie Shockley to provide an update.
Thank you so much, trustee. Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for your heartfelt words. I love you all very much, and I'm very thankful for you and thankful for the opportunity to update you on the work in which you are all so richly engaged. We would not have been able to advance our commitment to truly inclusive higher education were it not for the leadership on everybody of everybody at this particular meeting. As all of you know, under the leadership of Vice Chancellor Maybank, Dr. Carrie Shockley, our Director of Disability Programs, and I are privileged to work in the Office of Student Inclusion Initiatives, where we work actively to ensure that student communities that have historically been underrepresented and underserved in higher education are fully included and fully participate in the richness of all aspects of CUNY life. We lean into existing student communities at CUNY that we can readily identify, but one of our great joys is also the ability to look across the landscape of our city and state and nation and look at constituencies that have not yet been as richly included in the university's historic access mission. And through CUNY Unlimited, Dr. Shockley and I and our colleagues have had the opportunity to work actively to ensure that New Yorkers with intellectual disabilities have equal access and opportunity to benefit from the richness of a CUNY education, to develop their independent living and their pathways to meaningful careers. Dr. Shockley, would you mind sharing your screen with the PowerPoint? Thank you. Clear the next slide, please. Thank you. So there is a really burgeoning population of New Yorkers with intellectual disabilities and a really vibrant market for post-secondary education among New Yorkers with intellectual disabilities. According to the New York State Office of People with Developmental Disabilities, there are more than 140,000 New Yorkers with intellectual disabilities, and a third of them live in New York City. Within New York City's Department of Education itself, we enroll more than 24,000 students in District 75, the inclusive district without walls. And around 11,000 of those students are enrolled in programs that entitle them to a free and appropriate education from ages 18 to 21. These, of course, are students who are very aligned with our core target population of college students. These students are third-generation IDEA students, meaning that they've grown up with inclusion in education as an expectation. Their classmates throughout the arc of their educational career, very often at the New York City DOE, have been our CUNY students. They're their friends and their neighbors, and when they think about what education will mean for them at age 18, their earnest desire is not to be educated or trained in a separate segregated setting, but to learn alongside their friends and neighbors who are at our CUNY campuses benefiting from the richness of student life and the full complement of academic offerings at CUNY. Carrie, can I have the next slide, please? So I, these, all of you are the true keepers of CUNY's access and inclusion legacy. But as you know, what we're proposing in inclusive higher ed is very consonant with the rich legacy, pathbreaking legacy of access. CUNY's history is consistently extending higher ed opportunity to groups that have historically been denied higher education access. And in 2021, the next step for us is the burgeoning inclusive higher ed movement, making sure that we can meaningfully include students with intellectual disabilities in CUNY's robust access mission. Carrie, can I have the next slide, please? So Think College, which is a national clearinghouse for individuals with intellectual disabilities in higher education, reports that there are more than 400 inclusive higher ed programs nationally. So CUNY is really at the heart of a burgeoning higher ed movement. There are 33 such programs in New York State, but only seven downstate. Five CUNY programs and programs at Westchester Community College and Mount St. Vincent. So we have a unique opportunity to make a very significant impact on higher ed access here downstate and particularly in New York City. Carrie, could we have the next slide, please? And now I'm going to yield to really the true leader of this program. She's just a remarkable leader and scholar, Dr. Carrie Shockley. Carrie?
Thank you, Chris. And good evening, everyone. So as Chris mentioned, there are five CUNY campuses that were part of a grant project that was funded by the U.S. Department of Education. And part of the grant was to look for ways to sustain the models that we had on the campuses in a formal way. So four of them are through the Melissa Riggio Higher Education Program in partnership with AHRC NYC, which is a disability-serving agency. And then the other is at Queens College through their College Inclusion Program, District 75, New York City DOE. So the partnering campuses are Queens, Postos, BMCC, the College of Staten Island, and Kingsborough Community College. Another part of the grant that we were part of was to look at ways that we might apply for what's called a comprehensive transition program, and this is a designation offered by the U.S. Department of Education. And having a CTP means that students who are participants and eligible would be able to draw federal funds towards their education. And so they would be able to access Pell and federal work-study. And there are four pillars to being a CTP. It's academic access, campus membership, career preparation, and self-determination. So what that means is the academic access, at least 50% of the time that students are in camp, on campus and participating in coursework, at least 50% of those activities have to be in inclusive settings. They should also have a wide selection of courses. They are eligible for financial aid even though they are officially auditing classes. Campus membership means they have access to participating in clubs and civic organizations, participating with classmates and peer mentors who help navigate campus life. This has been a really important feature, particularly with the Melissa Riggio Program, where students are engaged to support participants in the CUNY Unlimited Program with social engagement, academic supports. They also serve as tutors. Career preparation, paid and unpaid internships, both on and off-campus, soft skills training, work-based learning, and all of it is with the self-determination aspect, meaning students are really in control and driving what their curriculum looks like, so that they're choosing the classes that they want, they're participating on campus in the ways that they want, and the internships and work opportunities that they have are aligned with their overall goals. So we developed a credential, which is part of our CTP application, and this is in part modeled after what Melissa Riggio AHRC offered, along with the D-75 model. So with faculty from a few of the campuses, voice of students weighing in on what the experience ought to be, representatives from AHRC and DOE, we developed a credential that meets all of the pillars for the CTP in academic, vocational, and social. And I'll just give you an overview of what those credentials look like. So credential A, which would be a two-year experience with a third-year option. We're calling it a 24-credit experience. It's really a 24-credit equivalency experience. So 12 credits in academics, nine credits based on employment. So this potentially would be three work-based internships over the course of two years. Social credits, these are aligned with either civic engagement, club leadership, or advocacy, and then a functional academic development experience. So zero credits, but this would be the time that would be allotted for tutoring supports, coaching, mentoring, and all the other aspects that would be the non-credit experience, up to the 50%. And then the same with credential B. So this is a three-year experience with just a few more credits, a few more work-based experiences, et cetera. Sorry. Okay. So with the group, our subcommittee, when we were building this out, we were looking at what are the learning outcomes that students ought to pursue while they are taking these classes? Because they're non-credit, what we were looking for was on what basis would students be evaluated? And so we came up with these nine program learning outcomes. And they're to run the gamut of understanding themselves in the context of social settings and relative to the world, what course content they would walk away with, how might they demonstrate communication skills, both in an academic setting and in a professional setting when they go to take their internships, basic research skills, social skills, and then what's across the academic, social, and vocational opportunities, all of these would be possible to achieve with the work-based setting actually covering all nine of the learning outcomes. So just in terms of where we are in terms of funding, currently, the Central Office has supported the development of and the short-term startup funds. We're pursuing Pell funding through the CTP application, and we're also working with various foundations, trying to look for private support, additional support from CUNY Central. We've also been in conversation with members of City Council in partnership with the Department of Education to look for supports for students who are in the District 75 model, and we're also looking at access VR dollars as this is a vocational model because of the workforce component attached to it. And just where are we now? So happy to report that with our partners, we've developed a joint application for students. So there's a central point of contact for interested participants, and then we pass on the pieces that are relevant for AHRC and the DOE. We're in a recruitment cycle now for fall 2022, and we're super pleased to report that Ostos Community College has applied for their CTP. That application was submitted about three weeks ago. It is currently under review. We've received some questions, and so we've given feedback at the end of last week. And what this means is this would be one of our first campuses that would be eligible to receive federal aid for the CUNY Unlimited Program. And we are working with the Financial Aid Office centrally on how we would enter students into the system, how we're going to be tracking their credit hours, et cetera. That's it. And I will stop sharing.
So we're pleased to answer any questions. We're particularly proud of the employment outcomes that are emerging from students' participation in CUNY Unlimited, the Inclusive Higher Ed Program. Individuals with intellectual disabilities were hit particularly hard by the pandemic because the economic sectors that were affected most profoundly, retail and food service, are where employment opportunities for individuals with intellectual disabilities tend to be clustered, and students who participate in our CUNY Unlimited Program are employed at a 20% higher rate after completing their program than similarly situated individuals with ID who don't participate in CUNY Unlimited. So we're pleased if there are any questions.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I could, Mike Arvanees, just, you know, Babe Ruth hit three home runs on his last, in his last ballgame. I see V.C. Rosa's trying to do that, too. Nice job, everybody. But you know, this is near and dear to my heart, and I couldn't congratulate the Vice Chancellor more on his new appointment, but leaving us with this legacy is something that's very important to me and to the disabled community. And I can tell you, AHRC, and I've been watching the Melissa Riggio Program even before I became a trustee, and it's wonderful to see, and I greatly wish its expansion. I guess my, my, my questions would be surrounding, is it just those two-tier credential programs, or is there something along the stackable credential? For instance, Hostos has the OSHA and SST classes. There are people with intellectual disabilities that work in the, in the safety industry, flag men, flag people, and that sort of thing, but they, they need some credentials from places like Hostos and Kingsborough in order to obtain those positions. So maybe we could see if there's a step part in there.
Trustee, thank you for the kind words. It's easy to look like Babe Ruth when you have Dr. Shockley lobbing your batting practice so that you can consistently knock it out of the park. I'm going to yield to Carrie to talk a little bit about the credential. But the notion of the stackability of the, of the unlimited credential and other very specific and highly marketable credential is music to our ears. Carrie?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chris. So this particular application that we're pursuing is what we're calling an academic and career studies model. However, the CTP, as long as it meets those four pillars, really can be any form of a college experience that we design. So it can move into those spaces where it is a very specific training. And we do have faculty who have expressed interest where they have a cluster of classes where they think that would perfectly situate someone to transition into a job as a, as an assistant, et cetera, around like recreation, therapeutic recreation, et cetera. So that is a possibility, and we just think this is sort of just the scratching at the surface for what we could do with CTPs.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments from other members of the committee?
Madam Chair, I would just like to echo trustee Michael Arvanees' comments about one, our wonderful Christopher Rosa. You have been truly a mentor to so many of us. This is a difficult time to see that although you will not be here, you will always be here in spirit and know that you're a guiding light for and always have been for CUNY. And just wish you the very best and know that you will be doing amazing things going forward. And this program, the content, thank you for the information. It was very, very helpful to hear how best you're laying out, the program is being developed and you're laying it out. But also, if it's okay with our chair, would there be a time that you can also come back and tell us your progress with, with the program? And anything that you feel that we could, could help with in terms of questions you can have for us going forward that... That that we can get back for you. Among the trustees, if that's okay with our chair and the other committee members here. But.
I just I just wanted to add to the members of the committee. That we should probably just sit down with the with Dr. Shockley and figure out. How best we can be supportive of the of the goals and objectives. Whether we can help to identify placements for the students. Because I think that that's that's important. I chaired the I chaired. Mental health when I was in the city council. I am a graduate of NYU School with Disability Club for Children with Disabilities. So I think that together we can come up with and identify some ways in which to strengthen and support. So that it's not only when we come to the meetings that we know what's happening, especially to students with disabilities. And I'm I'm open for that. And you know, I always pull the members of the committee along with me to make sure that we are. Making the kind of input that we can.
We follow you well, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, VC Rosa and Dr. Shockley.
There are some hands raised, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead. My 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 special member from from LaGuardia Community College. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. If you see Rosa, I guess this is what it takes to get to get to see you. Our years working together, I think I think back at them as golden years. The one question I had for for you was this question of. I see there that students who are participating in this are entitled to work, to be in clubs. Will they be entitled to all aspects? That they pay for through their student activity fees, which includes intercollegiate sports and the like?
A very good question, Hugo, and thank you. They are they have been. They're years that I cherish. And so the answer is they will pay student activity fees. And so presuming that they meet the other eligibility criteria to participate in other. College and university sanctioned opportunities, they would be otherwise qualified. In order to participate in intercollegiate athletics. You need to matriculate. So they they probably wouldn't qualify for most varsity sports. Possibly inclusive athletics, which, as you know, we're launching. Centrally. But but they would be able to participate in most student activities. They would not be eligible typically to run for SGA positions. But they could be active club members and club presidents depending upon the bylaws. So there still is a very rich and robust opportunity for them to participate in a very meaningful way. In in student life and student leadership. And quite frankly, thanks to the generosity of our partner campuses, they already are. But thank you. Good question.
Any other question?
Giovanni has a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Dr. Rose, I just wanted to thank you for all of the work that you've done throughout the years of my time being a student. And making sure that we're continued to be inspired and never forgetting about marginalized groups. I think you ensure that we bring intersectionality in our advocacy and it's something that I'm very grateful for. And we will miss you, but I know you will go on to do great things. And as always, Student Affairs is doing an incredible job. With our students and the work that we're doing. And as a CUNY student, the work that you all do. Help us and touch us in every single way. So I just want to thank you for this update and great work that you all are doing.
Thank you, Giovanni. Thanks for keeping USS strong. And I'm I'm still a very proud CUNY alum, Queens College alum and Graduate Center alum. So now I I look forward to engaging richly in that new status. So thank you.
Okay, we we will now hear some reflections from selected students. On the twenty twenty one fall semester, Vice Chancellor Maybank. Will make the introduction of our students.
Just that can unmute here. Okay, so I'm not going to be before you long. I'm just going to give you the lineup and I'm going to let them do what they do best. Which is give us their hearts. And so. We they each have two minutes. If you see me flailing my arms and acting crazy over here, you know your two minutes are up. So I'm going to give you the order of appearance and we're going to just get started. So we'll start with Lanine Jacob, who is a student at Bronx Community College. And then go on to Armani, also known as Junior. Correla. Then Kayla, oh, I'm sorry, and he is from Hostos Community College. Kayla Kempf from Queens College. Then Tricia Bartholomew from Medgar Evers College. And Georgios Meseloris. From York College. That's the order. So after you've heard the person before you stop, just jump right in because we're. Long spent on the evening. Lanine?
Thank you so much, VC Maybank. I really appreciate that introduction. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lanine Jacob and I am a student at Bronx Community College, pursuing a degree in nuclear medicine technology. I am also a proud parent with an invisible disability to a neurodiverse child with autism. Moreover, I have the honor of serving as Chair of the CUNY Coalition for Students with Disabilities, CCSD. An advocacy group that represents the interests of more than eleven thousand CUNY students with disabilities. Our students attend CUNY because we want to ensure that we too can make a living wage. Our students with disabilities work hard in their classes with the goal of one day becoming tax contributors, not simply tax consumers. To that end, I too am working hard. After twelve years of struggling to make ends meet. I chose to return to school at CUNY to benefit not just myself, but my family. I look at my fourteen year old son who will begin college in a few short years and I want to be that shining example for him. I want to be the light that shows him that CUNY is a place that celebrates disability culture. And offers an opportunity for academic and career success. CUNY provides a path to opportunity for so many families, including mine. On behalf of CCSD, I would like to thank Chancellor Matos. Vice Chancellor Maybank, who is our heart. The University Student Senate. And all the members of the CUNY Board of Trustees Committee and for Student Affairs and Special Programs. For offering us an opportunity to speak today. Your commitment to our students means the world to us. I also want to thank all our CUNY faculty and staff who have continued to support CUNY leads and enhancing services for students with disabilities. We don't know where we would be without you. And last, but certainly not least, I want to thank all our students. Like CUNY itself, you are our dearest partners and a vital part of our city's economic engine. You are truly amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Junior?
Good evening, trustee Clark, Vice Chancellor Maybank and honorable members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to. Thank you for the opportunity to reflect upon all I've experienced during the last six months. As I sat down on Sunday after my birthday celebration with my mom, I thought, wow. One interesting journey CUNY has offered me. My name is Junior Armani Correla. I'm a student at Hostos Community College where I major in game design. I proudly serve as the Vice President of Academic Affairs and Chair of the Senate for the SGA at Hostos. In this role, I'm honored to empower Hostos student voices to be heard. As we all work together to make our college a supportive place for students. I expect to graduate this June and I hope to continue my education at Baruch College, pursuing a degree in business administration. While I've learned a great deal inside the virtual classroom over the past six months. Tonight, I'd like to tell you about all I've learned outside of the classroom. And how these experiences have shaped my career options. This summer, I was fortunate to have been selected to participate in the CUNY Recovery Court. A paid summer internship program developed by CUNY. As part of the New York City Mayor's Office Summer Youth Employment Program. As a high school student, I participated in summer youth. And while I was grateful for the opportunity to tell you the truth, I never felt as though the experience was leading me to something bigger. Until I participated in CUNY Corpse. While with fellow CUNY students to make our college more accessible. To students with disabilities. Specifically. We learned. How to caption videos, create and review digital content to ensure ADA accessibility and encourage student leaders to spread awareness of ADA access. And disability empowerment. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of the Committee of Student Affairs, Vice Chancellor Maybank, students, staff and faculty. My name is Kayla Kempf, pronoun she they, and I'm currently a senior studying psychology at Queens College. I identify as bisexual and not binary and I'm honored to be here as Vice President of Student Association. And an active member of Glossa Gender Love and Sexuality Alliance, who helped me find my true self and become a leader I am today. When I first started my adventure at Queens College, my first club was Glossa. Everyone welcomed me with open arms and warm smiles. The warm welcome helped me become. Come out as bisexual. Shortly after, I became inspired by the leadership I was surrounded by, especially for the CUNY Queens Consortium. And thus, I became Secretary Glossa during my sophomore year. During my time as both a member and secretary, I helped promote a fun and happy space for queer students at Queens College. Such as planning a Halloween themed drag show at Bella Noche. And when the pandemic hit, hosting a virtual house party for everyone. Being secretary also helped me expand my network to the QC Committee for Disabled Students, the CUNY Coalition for Students with Disabilities. CCSD and USS, where we hosted events like Break the Silence. Spreading awareness against bullying and harassment of historically marginalized communities facing schools and workplaces. When the pandemic first hit, several students, including myself, felt lost and didn't know what to do. We were so thankful for hard work and staff at QC, like my lovely advisor, J.C. Carlson. They helped me regain my confidence to make sure students got the safe space they needed, despite it being virtual. This also led to Quick Connect, a weekly virtual meetup where we were able to connect with students at QC and university wide. At a QC Urban Studies Club, the QC Veterans Club, the CUNY LGBTQI plus Advocacy Academy. And others to discuss LGBTQ plus I. Related topics on how to connect to resources such as Chances Emergency Grants. Mental health offices and food pantries. Glossa helped me become a proud sister of Sigma Alpha Epsilon Pi and Vice President of Student Association. I still carry on one of my main goals to this day as VP. Ensuring that students get the safe space they need. I thank President Wufer's leadership and ensuring that students' leaders are part of decision-making process. My advisor, J.C. Carlson, Vice Chancellor Maybank and her support staff. Who have encouraged me and student leaders all to CUNY to be the best we can, while reminding us to. Of our academic, while reminding us to put academics first. Thanks, Charmaine. And to my colleagues and friends of student leaders who work tirelessly to help others. Thank you, CUNY Board Trustees, for making sure that CUNY is inclusive for students like me. Sorry, my voice is a little off. I lost my voice this weekend and now I'm slowly getting better.
Thank you. Tricia?
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank Chancellor Maybank and all the board members. I wrote something, but I choose to opt out of reading what I wrote because I want to speak from the heart to you guys. So again, good evening. And I'm a public administration student. I'm a senior at Medgar Vis College. I would like to start off by letting you all know I'm mega, meaning mega proud and CUNY happy. I'm honored to be here. This is how I genuinely feel. With that said, I'd like to let you all in on my college experience. I wasn't able to intern. And shadow at one forty one Livingston. The Housing Court. That opportunity at a public administration student allowed me to shadow a judge. With that opportunity, I wasn't able to learn so much about advocacy for tenants' rights. And I can use that in my major. Another internship I had, I wasn't able to shadow government officials. Because of Medgar Evers College, I've been able to intern with. Mercedes Nasi's Councilmember of the Forty Sixth District. I've been able to attend. Events with Governor Kathy Zanator. Name it, name it. I have been with so many different government officials and shadowed so many government officials. Medgar have made my dream more than a come true. Another thing I would like to thank Medgar for, within the pandemic. The Sikh Department did. It was more than there for me as a student. Because I gained from the Sikh Department soft skill, networking. And thank you again. I would like to give my acknowledgement to Dr. Blair as well.
Great. All right. Georgios?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen and members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Georgios Meseloris. It's an honor to be with you today. One of the cornerstones of your college is the unifying idea that through the perseverance, determination. And the classic can do spirit, we can overcome any obstacle that life throws at us. This idea was thoroughly put to the test, starting on March eleventh, two thousand and twenty. Shifting to a remote learning platform did have its challenges. But I was able to adapt, thanks to the helpful presence of the Mail Initiative Program. As well as the York, the York College Food Pantry. For example, the BMI program didn't cease to pursue its mission to mentor new students in need of guidance. Weekly mentoring sessions continued amidst the challenging circumstances, obviously making the shift to online as well. My friends and I were able to develop a game to complement the mentoring experience and it has served us well in the long run. As for the food pantry, we were still able to provide students with bags of food during the pandemic. We weren't about to let the circumstances interfere with our initiative to serve the student body and to help to help combat food insecurity. Mentoring during the pandemic was a very fulfilling and edifying experience. It reminded me that as a York student, it is incumbent upon me to uphold and exemplify the virtues. Of not just a member of the Mail Initiative Program, but as a student of your college. It is a privilege to be part of a community that cares so much about its students and never hesitates to help them in their time of need. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I trust that you have a sense of all that has happened for our students over the course of this past semester. They'll be finishing strong and making us all proud because that's what they do. My, one of my favorite quotes is from Gwendolyn Brooks and she said. We are each other's business. I'm sorry, we are each other's harvest. We are each other's business. We are each other's magnitude and bond. And because of the experience that you, the experiences that you've heard here. And the people acknowledged, this is what it's all about. And so I'm just so proud of each of you and thank you for sharing your stories. We were supposed to have an enrollment report. I can offer that in about a quick five minutes so that we're done in five. Or we can go to questions for our student panel. So. Chairperson, I yield to you to do whatever it is you think most appropriate.
I'd like to see whether any of our members have any question for our students. They are certainly shining stars for CUNY. And I think I know at least one student in the group and will say to her. When next I come up the hill to Medgar, I'll make sure that I catch up with you.
If I may, Chairwoman, it's Myra.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm I'm on the move, but I just wanted to congratulate all the students. This is my absolute favorite part. You know, listening to you guys and I just wanted to share a few comments first. Dr. Rosa, thank you for everything you're doing and we're going to miss you dearly, but so proud of you and everything you do. To the students, I tried to capture all your names, but I didn't get you all. So I'm just going to go with my notes and say. I think Liliana, you know, you are already a shining light to not just your son, but to all of us. I want I wanted to tell Junior a happy birthday and thank you for all. I want I wanted to tell Junior happy birthday, and thank you for all the work that you've done. You've obviously experienced a lot of different opportunities and are not shy to do so. And I appreciate you doing that within CUNY and having it be a good experience. I look forward to buying your games in the future for my children. The one I missed was from Queens College. I'm sorry that I missed your name, but you know, it just makes me feel so good to know how warm you felt at your school, to to make you feel safe enough to to be who you are and that you're doing the same to support others in that same space, so that they can feel safe and and accepted to be they are in the school. So thank you for that. Tricia, you know, you're just your energy is amazing. I'm so glad that you've had so many amazing opportunities to kind of have the experience to know how you want to help your community in the future, and I look forward to seeing you and supporting you in the future. And then last, Georgio, thank you so much for for the mentoring that you do, even though it's different and virtual. I'm sure that there's so many students that are inspired by by you and are able to go to the next level during such a challenging time because you give of yourself to support them, as well as keeping the food pantry going. So Vice Chancellor Maybank, thank you so much for always giving us some amazing students to share their story.
Thank you for your support. It means so much. So thank you.
If I could just interject, we're about fifteen minutes over, and the next committee meeting needs to start, and they'll need QD TV. So perhaps it would be a good idea to bring the enrollment update to the next committee meeting, Vice Chancellor Maybank, if that's okay. Great. Thank you.
Can I just make a final comment? Just as a sibling of a person with intellectual disabilities, thank you to all the students, and you're the reason that we've been able to take the Willbrook, which was the stuff of nightmares for people with disabilities, and CUNY has now turned it into a place where dreams come true. So you all very much for what you're doing, and your self-advocacy and your advocacy for people like my brother.
Vice Vice Chancellor, you have a last word? Vice Chancellor Maybank?
I just am honored to be allowed to be in the same space with these amazing students. I just adore them, and I'm glad that we can bring them before you to hear their stories. So I will conclude with that.
Okay, and may I may I ask for closing out the adjournment? Zero second?
Arvendis second.
Anyone oppose? Not having any opposition, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.
You have a good night, everyone.
Thank you for having us.